We were gonna be seeing you tonight.
I gave Scott body.
Ready to go, Mr. LaFever? Ready to go?
All right.
All set? Good evening. Welcome to the December 21st edition of the East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors Meeting. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom, with login and call-in information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will apply. The meeting will be run by the Vice Chairman this evening, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer a comment, you must be recognized by the Chair. For people using or utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and address to the moderator, and your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the Chair to be recognized. Once recognized, the Chair will unmute your microphone, and after speaking, please mute your microphone. East Hemphill Township's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting-minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about an agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. Finally, no action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. We will now move on to our first agenda item. Please join me in a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the second item on our agenda is our consent approval of our consent agenda. Our consent agenda is usually items of action of a routine nature and really that don't call for much in a way of public comment or discussion.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as we review the reports from our staff departments and things, here at the end of the year, I believe it appropriate that we acknowledge their efforts. Their excellent efforts for this township, which are evident in a conclusion of another successful year. And I say that we would say simply, thank you.
Well put.
Well put, and I think we all agree with you on that. We've had a great year. We've got great employees. Along with that, well, let's approve the agenda and then I'll get into the next. So we've got a motion for Mr. LaFever. A second for Mr. Weaver. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, zero. So the motion passes four to zero. At this time, since we're already talking a little bit about township effort that goes on here, we have a new employee this evening at a meeting for the first time. Like to recognize him, Glenn Lys. Welcome, Glenn. It's good seeing you. What are you gonna be doing in Public Works? Okay, good, good.
He was hired in November, so he's still kind of getting his, breaking himself in. But as I understand it, and I think Perry can concur, that he's gonna fit in quite well. He's probably ready to start plowing.
I'm gonna say, can he drive a snow truck?
He can drive a snow truck.
Well, that's great. Glad to have you. Okay, thank you. Then moving on to number three, action items. First up tonight, we have MXL Industries, 1764 Roarstown Road, a modification request. Mrs. White, sir?
Yes, we have a representative here that's going to take over that. If there's any question, Nate Sturgis, our planner, is online. But I believe you can walk us through it.
All right.
We don't have a plan unless you'd like us to put something up.
I think it's fine. I'll just explain the project. By the way, I'm Dave Keener. I'm here representing Land Vision this evening. The project is 1764 Roarstown Road, MXL Industries is a parking lot expansion, about 18 spaces. And stormwater planning was required. Part of that is to have a geologist assign for the stormwater planning. And in lieu of a geologist, as a professional engineer, prepare the report. And therefore, we're requesting a modification of that requirement to have a geologist prepare that report.
And that's just one modification, right?
Just one modification, it's a very simple plan, it's only a stormwater plan. And, yes.
Okay. Any comment from the board? None here. Okay. Any comment from the audience? Zoom? We're in good shape. Okay. All right, that said, I'll entertain a motion. Let me get my list here. Motion or approved modification request number one, subject to all staff and engineering comments for MXL Industries, item number 22-16.01. I have a motion from Mr. LaFever. I'm sorry, Mr. Weaver. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Russell. Call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Zero. Motion passes four to zero. Okay.
For your time.
You bet. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Belmont Property Management. 2727 Columbia Avenue. Modifications and final plan. Do we have someone here? Awesome.
You need the pointer? I got one. Good.
Christmas gift.
Hi, good evening, Brian Cooley with D.C. Goon Associates. Along with me tonight is Wilson Hershey, who's the owner of the property and represents Belmont. Here tonight for the final land development plan and waiver modification requests for 2727 Columbia Avenue. I'll go over the proposed improvements. We can review the modifications. And we can answer any questions that the board has.
Okay.
So just to orient the board, this is the that's good, yep, thank you. Columbia Avenue on the south is the existing Mobile Home Park, and then Hurley Industries is on the left-hand side. So currently, there is just some existing macadam that's out front here. There's a 10-foot farm lane, which comes all the way back to a farmhouse in the back. There is a Lassa easement in Lassa Sewer Main that runs through the site. Currently, the site's served by public sewer and on lot water. There are two zoning districts. The zoning line is right near the Lassa line. North side's Enterprise. The south side is Community Business Center. And there is an existing wetland area that's on the northern portion of the property. Can you go to proposed improvements? That's good there. So what the owner's proposing is a couple of things. One is an eight-unit apartment building. And then there'll be four storage units located along a main access drive, which then goes down to Columbia Avenue. This, of course, this comes to Columbia Avenue, which is a state road, which requires a PennDOT permit. So as part of this, there'll be a new access drive to Columbia Avenue that existing 10-foot farm lane will then be cut off. So as I mentioned, eight-unit apartment building. The four storage unit buildings, it's approximately 27,000 square feet of total storage. There's approximately 36 units of storage. This will mainly be for RVs, boats, and some type of trailers. This will all be completely enclosed storage. In addition to that, there's an existing parking lot that was part of Hurley Industries that was sold as part of this property. The owner intends to convert this into outdoor motor vehicle storage. Again, that would be for RVs, boats, and trailers. And that would be in the existing parking area. That'll be re-lined to accommodate the parking of those vehicles. Go to, I think, the grading plan, just a few more sheets. That's good, thank you. Currently, there's no stormwater on-site, so we are proposing two rain gardens. There's a small rain garden just near the wetland over here. There's another larger rain garden up to the north. Those two facilities will detain stormwater for a two-year storm for volume, as well as the two-through-100-year storm, as far as rate is concerned. As I mentioned, the Lassa easement does run through here. The apartments will be connected to the public sewer in the Lassa main. The storage units do not require any sewer or water connections. The on-lot well will be removed, and there'll be a new water line that'll extend from Columbia Avenue. And there'll be a fire hydrant right near the proposed apartment building, so public water will be available to the site. As far as approvals are concerned, we do have city water approval for capacity, as well as the land development plan. Same thing with Lassa. The township did review the plan as far as emergency services, so we did run a truck-turning template for the fire truck from Columbia Avenue and then up into the area of the outdoor storage. And the access drive is able to accommodate the fire truck. Just yesterday, we did receive the MPDS permit for construction. Obviously, site's over an acre disturbance, so we do have the MPDS permit. We've submitted the PennDOT just a few times. Just a couple minor comments left for the HOP. I would anticipate receiving that probably in the beginning of the new year. We did attend the Planning Commission meeting last week. The Planning Commission is recommending approval of the land development plan, and they recommended approval of the modification requests. So there are a series of modifications. I can certainly review those in depth, or if the board has any questions related to any of those modifications. They were part of the latest David Miller letter, which was dated November 17th.
I do note a typo on that letter. About halfway down in the first paragraph. Not even half, the third. You referenced 2727 Marietta Avenue.
Correct, that was noted just prior to the meeting.
Okay, all right. That's not, that's what impacted anything, right?
Yeah, it's all Columbia Avenue.
Right.
It's just a
Okay.
There's no intended vehicle salvage on that northern parking area, is there?
No, there will be no salvage.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a question on modifications four and five, which is drainage time for the stormwater facilities, which are well over the standard in the ordinance. And so I think one of the justifications was the ECS Environmental had recommended that that was acceptable, but I don't think that we saw that letter. I'm just wondering what was their reasoning behind that?
Yeah, well, there was a couple reasons. One was, we did perform infiltration at the site. Initially, we did try to do infiltration testing on the left side of the access drive, right near the Mobile Home Park, but there was some groundwater that was to the surface there. So then we decided to come over here to this rain garden, and then the rain garden up here. We were above the limiting zones. However, the infiltration rate was around .1 inches an hour after you took the safety factor in. Now, that meets the BMP requirements as far as the Stormwater Management Ordinance. The other thing to note with this site is this does require a 50% reduction of stormwater rate for any of the disturbed area because of the watershed that it's in. So these two basins, again, are designed for the two-year volume and then the 100-year rate. So in order to meet the 50% reduction of releasing stormwater, the storage within the facility is higher than a normal facility would be. The higher the stormwater, in combination with the infiltration rate, is why the infiltration rates are a little bit higher than what the ordinance allows. Again, ECS was the one who did the infiltration testing, and then also recommended in their letter the higher loading ratios. In addition to that, we are proposing an under-drain system in both rain gardens. And then those under-drains do tie into the outlet structure, and there's a cap. So, you know, in the event that it doesn't de-water within the time allotted, the owner is part of the operation and maintenance agreement that's recorded. The owner does have the ability to remove the cap, de-water the facility, and then put the cap back on.
Okay, and does that need an MPDES permit, or is that under an acre?
Yes, the entire site is well over an acre, and we did receive the MPDS permit yesterday.
Okay.
The Conservation District has reviewed and approved the stormwater.
Because there is a, did you consider the MRC Managed Release Concept Facility for areas that don't drain well?
This did not meet the MRC requirements.
It did not?
Did not.
Oh. And that was because it did have some infiltration?
That's correct. Yes, I've submitted, well, too many that I want. I've submitted a few of them, and oftentimes, the infiltration rate is zero. And I've had a few sites like that. It has to go to DEP, and it sits there for months, and yada, yada, but but no, this didn't meet the infiltration rates for the manual.
I'm just a little concerned about what, I don't know if we've ever approved a plan with that long of a drainage time that I can recall. So I'm kind of somewhat concerned about that. There's two modifications, but otherwise, I think it's great, it's an infill project. It's almost the definition of infill. And, you know, so I support it from that sense.
Just a quick question, was the was this letter from Geotechnical Engineering, was that provided?
It was. I don't know if
Nate, could you care to comment if you read that letter?
So we do have the letter, it just was not included in the packet.
Okay, that's all I need.
I believe that the ECS geology letter was included in a previous submission and not the most current one. So on David Miller's letter dated November 17th, there's a list of the items that was reviewed, but this letter was prior to this submission, which is noted on this letter.
Okay.
And DMA has reviewed that ECS letter and their stormwater report and had no issues with this request.
It's good to have their support, for sure. And we're good with staff. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No.
All right, any questions from the audience? And Zoom? Nothing there. Okay, sounds good, all right, well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Okay. All right, then at this point, we'll call for a motion to approve modification requests number two, six, eight, and number nine, and the conditional approval of number one and number seven, subject to all staff and engineering comments for the project on 2727 Columbia Avenue,
Can we separate out modifications four and five, please? For separate votes. The other ones, I'm okay with voting as a group.
Okay. Trying to think how to do that.
You would be a motion to approve modification requests two, three, and six, eight, and nine, and conditionally approve one and seven. The first round.
So I'll make a motion to that.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Zero. Motion passes four to zero. And then we've got to come back to, said three and four?
Four and five.
Four and five. Okay. Again, on the project, 2727 Columbia Avenue, 21-25.03, a motion to approve modification requests four and five, subject to all staff and engineering comments. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Motion from Mr. Russell, second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Weaver. Call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes three to one with Mr. Weaver casting a nay vote. And we can move on to the okay. For a final land development plan for the project at 2727 Columbia Avenue, motion to approve the final land development plan for 2727 Columbia Avenue, Township File 21-25.03, subject to all staff and engineering comments. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Motion from Mr. LaFever, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Russell. Call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Abstain, I think would be appropriate.
Okay.
I would need the reason for the abstention?
Sorry?
The reason for the abstention?
It's just that I recommended denial on the modification. If that makes sense.
Your appropriate probably be denial.
Okay, then I'll say nay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll call it three, one. Project moves on. Congratulations.
Again, thanks for your time, and have a nice holiday, thank you.
You bet. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the creation of a Deputy Chief Fire Official for Department 68, which is East Hemphill Township. This is a volunteer position.
I'll let Diane or John handle this one.
So Chief Kotmeyer is on Zoom with us, but I'll go ahead and give you the main information, then if you have any questions, he's available there to answer for you. The Deputy Chief Fire Official position will be designated as Deputy Chief 68, as a radio designation. You do have a job description attached in the manager's report. This position is designed to serve alongside the Chief Fire Official, which is Chief Kotmeyer, and act as his designee. You did pass an ordinance just last month, giving the Chief Fire Official authority across the township. The Deputy Chief Fire Official would then be able to act as his designee in accordance with that ordinance as well. The position provides command officer support to all three fire departments and helps us to fill the void in coverage when Chief Kotmeyer or myself, or both of us are unavailable. It will also serve to assist the fire departments as the number of available line officers is diminishing after the first of the year. Deputy Chief 68 position also will have some assistance in emergency management functions as well. So the motion before you this evening, then, would be at the request of staff to create the position of the Deputy Chief Fire Official designated as Chief 68, to serve alongside the Chief Fire Official and function as his designee, as is indicated in Resolution 2022-16.
Any comment from the board? I
This is something the Public Safety Working Group has talked about and supports.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a quick comment. As many of you know, the Public Safety Group is currently in the process of reviewing and reorganizing aspects of the fire service operation in East Hemphill. Under the stewardship of Chief Fire Official John Kotmeyer, we've seen a significant increase in fire service efficiency and effectiveness. We also note improvements in camaraderie, cohesion, and willingness to work together by our three respective volunteer fire stations. To build on that foundation already in place, John has recommended to the Public Safety Group the creation of the position of the Deputy Chief Fire Official, as Mrs. Garber most eloquently laid out. The Deputy Chief will work to support John and plan new initiatives within the fire service, particularly initiatives associated with recruitment, training, and retention of volunteer members. And that's probably the most important part of this whole process. The Public Safety Group is fully supportive of the creation of the Deputy CFO position, as Mr. Russell points out, and we'd like the support of the entire Board of Supervisors to create this new position. Any other comment from the board? Anything from the audience? Anything from Zoom? Hearing none? And I'll call for the motion to create the position of Deputy Chief Fire Official designated as Deputy Chief 68 to serve alongside the Chief Fire Official and function as his designee, as indicated in Resolution 2022-16.
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Russell, do I have a second?
Second.
From Mr. Weaver. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All those opposed? Zero. So the motion carries four to zero. Okay, then moving on from there, we have an appointment of Mr. Don Schenberger to the volunteer position of Deputy Chief Fire Official, effective immediately. And I would just comment here that with the retirement of Don from the East Petersburg Fire, as the East Petersburg Fire Chief, we are fortunate to have a highly skilled and experienced individual readily available to assist John in his work to make East Hemphill fire stations among the best fire stations in the county and state. So we got a great opportunity here with Don and
This is support by the three fire departments, too.
Yes, good point. Any other comment from the board?
Glad to have him.
Any comment from the audience? John, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I didn't do a very good job outlining how experienced Don is, but he is, if you could add maybe a couple of things?
Sure, you know, Don has been around, he's a very well-respected officer in Lancaster County, the entire region. He's been around, I don't want to date him, but he's been around for at least 40 years. And many of those, he's served as a fire officer, and, you know, a lot of them in a chief capacity. So very well-respected, very well-known, especially within our three departments within the commission, and a great asset. Again, he has a long list of credentials, and as you had alluded to, I'm very pleased to have him. And I'm grateful for the opportunity, the opportunity to continue to work with him.
Awesome, thank you very much. Any question, any comment from the audience? No? All right.
Mr. Vice Chair, just for your knowledge, Don Schenberger is joining us via Zoom on the phone this evening from Florida.
He is?
He is.
Okay. Okay. With that, let's get him appointed. Okay, a motion to appoint Don Schenberger to the position of Deputy Fire Chief, or Chief Fire Official for East Hemphill Township, effective immediately. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Russell, do I have a second?
Second.
Calling for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, zero. All right. Don is appointed to the position, effective immediately. All right, Don's in, Don is appointed to the position effective immediately, thank you. Old business? Any old businesses to discuss? Any new business?
Nope.
We have a traffic commission report this evening.
Yes, we may, we dealt with the continuing locations and. Efforts of, of monitoring and enforcement. Spring Valley Road remains our largest challenge. Mr. Weaver hit on what I believe. Is a worthy consideration going forward. In that he observes that where we have speed tables such as on Windermere Road. We have better results than where we have abrupt bumps or other methods of. Getting a driver's attention or getting them to slow down. And I think that that would be a great takeaway from our meeting tonight and something to consider as we go forward. That we have. Those rolling bumps or tables that. Keep people at fifteen or so. But not scrape or have the other issues that have worked negatively on these devices, so. Hopefully we can grow on that thought and that it has merit and it'll help us going forward. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. LaFever. Okay. The next item on the agenda is public comment, do we have any public comment this evening from either the? Audience here in the room or on Zoom? Hearing none, we can move on to the manager's report.
So Centerville Road, we have started work there, or they have started work. Doing some very minor work on Centerville. But primarily it's still at, at the piers at the bridge. They have established monthly meetings that staff will be attending to keep everybody apprised of what's going on. The Church Street Waterline is fully completed, that roadway is now open at least until spring, which is when the PennDOT will come through with their paving project. The Old Roarstown Road Bridge, there is work progressing along, it's slow and steady. There are still issues with utility relocation that are being worked through. Farmingdale Road, Mr. Bauer. Has indicated that he is aware that the poles need to be ordered quickly because of the lead time. He still needs to coordinate with utilities. Before that, that order can be placed. So that is moving along, but probably not as fast as we'd like it to move. The Dairy Road Project, those environmental documents were submitted to PennDOT. Returned to us and resubmitted again with comments addressed, so that's moving along. The Route seventy two Lititz Road Project. We are still awaiting a permit for that from PennDOT. You see Mr. Bauer's comments. We do have a meeting with B R Kreider and their representatives on the third of January to discuss. Alternatives that PennDOT wants us to look at, which is primarily dealing with Kreider Lane. And that access point on to seventy two. The truck study continues to have some fieldwork included, we hope to have something back so that. Staff and the board can look at that sometime in January. And hopefully get it open into the public at the January Traffic Commission meeting. The Stony Battery Trail is pretty much on hold until spring. I was recently informed that KRM does have this walkway stoned in. They're going to wait for some warm weather or spring to do the final paving on their portion, which is along Note Road. The McFarland Drive Culvert. Project. The, the culvert appears fine after the recent rains, it doesn't appear that sediment has been a problem. We are working on getting information packets out to the property owners and those will have February meetings with those owners. Buffett Drive, as was noted, I think at the Traffic Commission meeting has been completed, so the signage at Buffett Drive and D Street have, have been completed in Landisville. For the instructions of the board. You've got staff evaluations are being worked on. I did note that we had one vacancy in Public Works besides Mr. Lee's. We have actually hired a second or third person, which pushes, puts, puts us at full complement. This is a, a individual that is returning back to the township after resigning his position. You indicated a desire to come back and. It works with the Public Works Department and as well as the directors that to have him back. So we have a full complement going into the winter. I. Think I did give you boards and commissions vacancies that we have coming up for our reorg meeting. I did reach out to everybody, everyone is interested in serving again with the exception of one planning commission position. But we have three alternates and we have an option to pull one of those alternates for the planning commission.
Who went to plan commission?
I'm sorry?
Who's the person on the plan commission?
Julie Will. Has resigned as of the end of the year.
Okay.
There was a public safety working group meeting, we listened to the police department. Reviewed their calls for service regarding their progress with the trauma, trauma and comfort dog. We were told earlier in the evening that he's arriving tomorrow.
Yes.
Detective Bender will be, be the, the lead person on that.
Correct.
So that's moving forward, and they also are working through their detective rotations to select one detective, I think that's going to be probably in January.
We're hoping to have the decision this week or next.
Okay. License plate orders have, license plate readers have been ordered. And the rest of it is, is the fire services, which we've already addressed with regard to deputy chief's appointment this evening.
Did you get the dog?
Tomorrow.
Oh, okay, there was, there were some left then, in other words, they didn't all get snapped up.
No, they, the, the handler, there were a week off. Donating them, so they've been in the hands of the organization for the past week, so. Tomorrow, four police departments are meeting here. To talk with the. Organization and at that point, anybody that is definitively and is able to make their selection of their. Their canine, so we will be doing that tomorrow at two.
And what is his name? Not sure.
Well, I think I'd. Reserve until, okay, until tomorrow to announce the name. But we will post pictures of him, he's cute, they're all cute. And that concludes my report.
Members, members of the board traveling State Road this weekend. I observed that the digital billboard is operating on a six second sequence. Not the one minute sequence that was approved. Also, I noticed that the speed limit on State Road. Has been changed from twenty five miles an hour to thirty five miles an hour. And that's probably a state. Action on that part. But I asked Mrs. Schweitzer to look into this. My recollection on the approval of the billboard was that. They would be allowed to come back after the new sign ordinance was in place. And petition for a different sequence. The formula in the new zoning. Or in the sign ordinance. Has a very clear calculation. That would, to my eye, take a thousand lineal feet and a thirty five mile an hour. Speed limit and in that equation would come up with something much different than six seconds. My concerns are well known on the distraction I feel that billboard. Provides in that. Area. If any of us drive that, we know that there's traffic that passes on the right. There's still some confusion as to which lane goes where to go to two eighty three or Harrisburg or whatever. And I just feel that that sign must be. At, at. Must be in, in accordance with, with our ordinances as they stand, so. Just wanted to make known that I've asked this matter to be investigated by staff.
Yeah, thank, I thank you, I, I forgot about that, so staff did take and investigate the issue, Mr. Sturgis can report on that. That regarding the twenty five to thirty five on State Road. The speed limit on State Road was thirty five, the board reduced it to twenty five during construction. So we replaced those sides with thirty five.
I failed to look, I failed to look to see if there's a special hospital zone speed limit. I don't know if chief has any, no.
Not aware of one offhand.
Not like a school zone. Okay, well, that's an area where twenty five would be difficult to manage and I appreciate that, but there's going to be. A lot of emergency, well, hopefully not too much, but there will be emergency traffic and there would be a lot of traffic in that area. So.
Mr. Sturgis, did you want to just review what you have found, because he did reach out to Oak Tree.
I see nades here, okay.
So I did look at the conditional use decision for that billboard. The decision did allow for them to adjust the message duration based off of. The existing zoning ordinance while having to come back to amend the decision. I had the zoning officer go out and measure the sign duration. And she measured it between approximately seven and eight seconds. After calculating what they should be allowed based off our current sign regulations. Measured at approximately seventeen seconds. To meet the zoning ordinance. I did reach out to Oak Tree Outdoor Advertising to let them know that it wasn't in compliance currently. And haven't heard back from them since. So the zoning ordinance, the zoning officer will be reaching out to them again about the violation.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgis, that is definitely a significant difference. If that's what the ordinance calculates, that's what it calculates. And I have to accept that as the board has approved that, so thank you.
I've got a comment on Lititz and Route seventy two. So there's been some changes at PennDOT. New people involved with this project?
No, what reviewers, yes.
Reviewers, okay, I guess, I guess my feeling is that. I see the note here about mixed results when we get certain people involved.
Right.
But certainly Mindy Fee was sitting here in, in the meeting here at the Township Building. This will be something that she's very interested in and concerned about, and I, I think, you know, at a minimum, we should get her. In the loop on this and see what she could do maybe to move things along, because it's, I think for everyone, it's an important. Issue and, and project that we like to get moving on and. Not see drag out.
I kind of defer to Mr. Bauer because of his, his knowledge of who he's dealing with at PennDOT. Before we kind of let them loose, but you're right, they, they should be involved, they should be aware.
We already, we already played that, we gotta be careful not to play it too many times, we played it to get to this point. I would, I would kind of follow what the engineering advice is right now. For this one, just wait a little bit, we, we played that one really hard with PennDOT. With the politics with, with both Senator Almond and with Mindy Fee, so. Can't go through that well too many times, otherwise it's going to impact for other projects too.
Okay.
They're, they're aware, they're aware of the urgency, this is, they moved this, doesn't seem quick, but they did move this very quickly from. From a PennDOT perspective, this is moving lightning fast. From a private sector perspective, it's crawling. But from a PennDOT perspective, it is moving very fast right now.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I add that DEP is really not any better? I think they're just having trouble getting people.
And they are legitimately down to people for staff, so it's just, there are some issues with that, that unit right now at PennDOT, so. Okay, you had two retirements that occurred and they haven't filled the positions, so. We're not the only ones who are, are having a little bit longer wait times right now.
Well, we, we appreciate all the work Chris does for us. And. You know, again, just like to see it moving a little faster, but.
On a related matter, the intersection of Route seventy two and Greystone Road. I believe was being considered, if not decided, to have a delay. A delay between the reds and greens changes that allow for the. Auto truck that has to run the amber. For people not to proceed on Greystone as has happened in the past very tragically.
I, I think you're going to see all new intersection at Greystone and seventy two. I'm not quite sure the details of their permit, but. I think they're pulling all those lights off and putting new ones in.
That's where we did the joint grant applications for with the borough, right?
No, that was for Enterprise and Miller.
Down south.
But they're, one of this, one of the warning signs will be in East Hemphill Township for that Greystone traffic signal.
A delay in that light would definitely be an asset. You just. You need to stop and look.
And then one other comment, and it's a little off the topic of the manager's report, but there was a zoning hearing board meeting last night. I believe there were two items up for consideration.
There was.
The, how did the sign issue turn out?
Was denied.
Okay.
And the second one was approved.
Okay.
The sign issue was, they requested a, a higher.
Higher, yes. Okay, great, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay. Looks like that brings us to the end of the agenda, any other comment from anyone? All right, for the good of the order, oh, yes, sir. Well, and we're thankful that you come and, and participate and are, and are here. It makes it, it's valuable to us that we do get people at our meetings.
I don't know if you're aware that the reason Mr. Canar and Mr. Rupp and Mr. Chester's comes to our meetings. They are part of an organization that, I don't know if they, we call them monitors, but you do put something out based on what happens at the meetings to our residents. Information. Information.
And you have a newsletter? No, you're. It, it's an informal group?
It's like, it's like one day.
Okay.
It started when project in the past is gone.
For you, we would have an empty room, so, thank you.
Okay.
So he helps get the word out, which is good.
One other quick comment, we've got a reorganization and regular meeting of the board will be on, or the next regular meeting of the board will be on Tuesday, January the third. At four thirty, a little bit off our usual timeframe. And the second meeting of the month will be Wednesday, January the eighteenth. With that said, thank you. We're done.
Diane?
Are you, are you, are you?
Doesn't that really bad short fall for cloud operators?
Yes.
For each.
A discussion with PennDOT about.
All right, Andy.
About what happens.
Merry Christmas.
About what's the priority of Paris.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas.
Cloud operators.
I'm just throwing, I'm throwing it to the, the public safety part of our arm right now, be, be good to have a conversation with the county maintenance office. And make sure, because all the high number SRS are getting bumped for the two eighty threes, the thirties. Even the Route twenty three, so Harrisburg is a high number SR, as you're. And so it won't, it's going to get a much lower priority, but around the hospital area.
Right.
And State Road, leading up. And State Road leading up to there. We got our part of uh, Centerville Road, that all needs to be plowed. Uh, first plowed when it snows occurrence so that EMS can, emergency gets to the hospital. And.
Your vacation starts tomorrow?
Bureaucracy.
I'm here all next week.
Um, so I highly doubt that that list has been updated or changed in any way that reflected there's a hospital there now. I might be surprised, maybe we have, but it's a, there's a new, it's a new guy.
We know the township's in good hands.
Official, I don't, I can't remember his name, but he's now um. At um, at the district, so there's new faces for Lexer Group at this point. So that would be, it would just be good to just make sure that. We're not having this, I mean, that gets bumped and then all of a sudden he's influencing Harrisburg Pike because.
Was, yeah, you can see him.
Can't get to the hospital.
Uh, his name was up there.
Enjoy the grandkids.